So I'm going to bring the call of the zoning board of appeals meeting to order. Can we start with a roll call?
Mary Seminera.
James Meyer.
Aziz Essen.
Nora Drummond. Tara Franco. But can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, so our next upcoming meetings are going to be Tuesday, January 23rd and February 27th. Pam and I were actually having a discussion in the event of snow in January that we were concerned about going for too long without a meeting. There is actually five Tuesdays in January, and so the question would be whether we just want to set as a snow date in the event there is to meet on that fifth Friday.
I mean Tuesday.
The Tuesday, sorry, the fifth Tuesday. And in this way, when they actually send out their notices, they can just put that in place so that we don't have to worry about appropriate noticing.
I believe that's a good idea.
All right, I think that just because I don't want to go from November to February as we normally would, which is our snow policy, which I'll get on the record in a second. So I'm thinking if that works that we'll, you know, again, the town hall, there'd be no conflict for the room since it's the fifth Tuesday, so I just want to...
So I make a motion that we have a snow day for January 30th, 2018, for a snow day possibility.
And that the appropriate notices would reflect that?
Correct.
Okay. And only in the event that town hall is closed or inclement weather on that date, on the 23rd, would we just go to that snow date?
23rd or the 30th. I mean, in case 23rd is a snow day and then 30th is a snow day.
Well, if the 30th is a snow day, it's not going to, then it's just February.
Yeah.
Okay, so I...
I'll make a motion as may.
Second? Yes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let me get on, let me state the snow policy because some of you folks may be returning next month, or sorry, in January. In the event that town hall is closed, there will be, there generally is no meeting. Now, again, because of the motion that we've just made, our January meeting would be postponed just one week until January 30th, but in the event there is snow on that date, then there's not going to be a makeup meeting. We would actually just move everything to the February meeting. Okay, with all that said, we do have one set of minutes to approve.
Make a motion to amend the minute, I mean, to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And as it is the last meeting of our year, I do just want to take a minute to say thank you to everybody and happy holidays, but especially thank you to all of the staff that help us as we go through each meeting each year. You know, from Rick doing all the inspections and Lisa doing all our minutes and Tom and Pam just being our backup staff and everyday staff in the office, having to answer all the questions and deal with all the applications. It really makes our job a lot smoother knowing that, you know, we get to work with all of you guys. So, and my thanks to each of you as board members for the year again. It's been a good year, so happy holidays to all.
Thank you for your leadership. It's been very good, absolutely.
All right, so with that said, we have one decision. However, there's no update at this point on the decision on our agenda, so we're actually just, we're waiting. This is an application where the planning board and the zoning board together have put a request into the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to reconsider whether this property can be built into a buffer, a wetland buffer. So there's no, there's no information available on number one, so we're going to go right to, we have three public hearings this evening. If there's anyone who wishes to comment on any of the public hearings, this would be your opportunity. These are the three applications that the board has already had a chance to review. And then we do have one new application before us that the board has not had the opportunity to see yet, so it's be the first time. There will be no public comment on that last application. So going right to item number two, a public hearing. Appeal 3855-RIN Gerald, sorry Gerard RIN, 18 Smalley Lane, Stormville is requesting a 43-foot front line variance for a proposed 16-foot by 18-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107b2 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so Mr., we've had an opportunity to review this application after we reviewed a previous application.
Okay.
And so we're familiar with the fact that you have a very, very steep slope property, very heavily wooded.
Yes.
So lots of vegetation on there. And so because of the steep slopes and not wanting to really just cut down a lot of trees to be able to do that, you're looking to be able to put a shed very close, it's in the front of your house, but very close to the road, but it is a private road, my understanding is.
Yep.
And so the impacts are going to be very, very minimal in terms of visibility. It would be visible, however, from the road, is my understanding, based on what you've told us at the previous meetings. But because, again, of the steep slope of your driveway and the way the property is, you really don't have a whole lot of alternatives.
No.
The only question we have honestly is, or that I have, is there, could you consider doing a smaller shed because 16-foot by 18-foot is pretty substantial? So if you can explain what it would be used for and why that's, why you're thinking that that size is appropriate, that would help.
I picked that size because I don't know what size tractor I'm going to purchase to maintain the road to help my other neighbors.
Okay.
So, I mean, if I had to go smaller, I could, you know, I mean, if, what size?
What do you, if you can, refresh our memory as to what it is that you're proposing to be putting in? You're not talking about any motor vehicles, but you're talking about a tractor and the maintenance tools.
I have a lawnmower, a push lawnmower, you know, patio furniture, and then I want to get something to maintain the road, either with a rake on the back or...
You're talking utility tractor, you're not talking a garden tractor.
No, yeah, maybe a little bit bigger, yeah.
Little front loader on it, maybe?
Maybe, not, nothing crazy.
With hydraulic fluid?
Nah.
Well, that's what I'm thinking he is asking. He's asking for a three-point hitch rake on the back.
Height gets, changes the definition from shed to accessory structure though, doesn't it? If it gets over 10 feet in height.
Okay.
That would be the next level.
Are you looking to get a shed that's already built and just going to have it? Okay, so it's a normal typical shed as opposed to your, you wouldn't be building one yourself?
No, no, I would just get one that's, you know, pre-built.
If it's, it just says if it's over 10 feet, you need a building permit for the shed.
Will it have garage doors on it?
So is it a 16 by 18 shed as it is on this piece of paper or is it 14 by 16 as it's listed here? Or is it undetermined? Your drawing shows 14 by 16.
Yes, and then I came back and asked if I could do it a little bigger.
Oh, okay, so the 16 by 18 is the current?
Oh, okay.
The current. Okay, thank you.
All right, so, you have any sense of the color? Is it going to match your home?
Yes.
Okay. I understand it's going to be on a slope, so, and there is vegetation there, but especially in the winter time, it's going to be more visible. Is there some way to put any kind of vegetation or anything there to be able to screen it a little bit more so it's less visible?
Yeah, I could. I could put more trees or white pines or something like that to block it.
Okay.
Because right now I have four Cynthia going up the road and I could add more of those, but they, you know...
They lose their leaves.
Right, so I could go with a few white pines that way.
Okay, just because you're awfully close to the road?
I know.
That's, you know, that's the biggest issue. But we understand why because of the, you know, the nature of your lot itself, so. Have you spoken to any of your neighbors? Do they have any concerns about this or...
Two of them and one up the road, they have, yeah, no problem.
Okay, that, I mean, that helps because they'd be the one that would be seeing it, being as it is a private road, so. Okay, well, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the application from Gerald RIN, 18 Smalley Lane, Stormville requesting a 43-foot front line variance for a proposed 16-foot by 18-foot shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Well, I can close the public, can I have further comment just on if we're going to go forward with the decision, whether we want to comment on the fact that one of the important considerations on the size of the shed is going to be that he's getting a machine to maintain this private road.
Mm-hmm.
If for some reason this road was to perhaps go public or something in the future or is not being used for that purpose, would it be right to have that removed?
How long has this, this been a private road?
It'll stay that way, but I don't know.
As long as I've been there, I mean, 13 years. And I think before that it was because there was an old structure on my property.
Okay.
So.
I know some private roads have requested of the town to become...
Well, whether you call it a shed or an accessory structure, it's all for customarily associated with a principal residence and equipment for the storage or equipment used for the residence. So it doesn't, I think, by the definitions in the ordinance that we're prohibited from being for commercial, what business use.
Well, I'm not saying that, but his access to the house to maintain the private road for him and his neighbors, I don't know, it was just a thought I wanted to throw out there for discussion.
Oh, you mean if it ever became a town road?
Right.
Well, if it became a town road, then maybe that's one reason why the size of that shed shouldn't be so close to the road, I don't know.
I mean, there's only three other houses that are...
Right.
I don't know. It's not a big thing. I was just wondering if you wanted to give a decision, that's fine.
I think it's, there's a stone wall that's right next to it too, right? There's a stone wall that divides it from the road to the shed, so.
Okay. So I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, yeah, Jim, why don't you offer the resolution and then...
You just shot down my amendment.
No, maybe I didn't. Maybe I'm telling you it's your chance.
This is appeal number 3855 by Gerard RIN seeking a 43-foot front line variance, proposed 16-by-18-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107b2 of the zoning ordinance located at 18 Smalley Lane, Stormville. Resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to community on Smalley Lane as it is a private gravel road which is not heavily traveled and the shed will be located behind a stone wall. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant's lot is very steep and rocky. The variance requested is not substantial. Proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning boards of appeal hereby approves the above stated variance.
Second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
You too.
Item number three, sorry, appeal 3856, RUKA. Alfred Capelli representing Albano RUKA, 24 Whites Road, Hopewell Junction is requesting a variance to add a second story to a detached garage built prior to 1985 pursuant to section 194-107c of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, so we, again, we had the opportunity to review this last month. You're looking, you already have an existing garage that you wanted to replace the roof and in replacing the roof, you want to be able to make the building more attractive, add some dormers, but in doing so, you realize you can, you can create some storage space at the, at the time being. You're looking to propose a second story to this garage that would have stairs within the structure itself and create some space upstairs. It is not at this moment proposed to be living space, but because this garage was built prior to 1985, you, you know, have the opportunity to be able to do that with our review, so. So again, we're looking at a 30-foot by 30-foot structure where you're right now adding dormers. It's going to match your existing house?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so is there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
No? Okay, is, is there anyone who here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Albano RUKA, 24 Whites Road, Hopewell Junction requesting a variance to add a second story to a detached garage built prior to 1985? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And?
Mary?
Sure. This is appeal number 3856 for Albano RUKA. The project is a variance to add a second story to a detached garage built prior to 1985 pursuant to section 194-107c of the zoning ordinance located at 24 Whites Road in Hopewell Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Mary Seminera. Whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant would like to add a second story to his garage which was built prior to 1985. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board, zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries. Now you'll deal with the building department, okay? Have a good evening. You don't have to do it tonight, just, yes. Okay. All right, item number four, appeal 3857, Van Dyke. Mark Van Dyke, 3250 Route 52, Stormville is requesting a 130-square-foot variance for an existing 480-square-foot detached accessory structure pursuant to section 194-107d of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The applicant just brought two letters for the record.
Okay, good, thank you. So last month, we did have an opportunity to review your request. Back in 2010, you built a structure to be able to store wood. You have an outdoor wood burning stove, so it's about 20-foot by 24-feet?
Correct.
Okay, so it's considered, it's not a shed, doesn't have sides to it essentially, but it's, so it's considered a detached accessory structure which in, according to our code, should not be exceeding 350 square feet. However, yours is larger than that, so we're, that's what we're here for. But you're on a lot that's five acres?
Four acres.
Four acres, okay, so you're on a very large lot. It's not visible to your neighbors.
No.
There's not a lot of impact. It's, we're not looking to change the location or anything like that. It's just because of the nature of where the wood burning stove is, you really are looking to be able to have easy access to the wood to be able to heat your home.
Correct.
Okay. Anything else you wish to add?
Nope.
Okay, so...
You said it's a pre-existing woodshed. How long has it been there?
2010.
2010.
2010, okay, so it's been a while. Okay. And again, so all you're trying to do is to legalize that particular...
Yes.
Call it a shed or structure?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not, by its nature, it's not a shed, so.
Okay, so...
Yeah, well, and any other comments or questions from board members?
And so you maintained the 20 by 24 size?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Mark Van Dyke, 3250 Route 52, Stormville requesting a 130-square-foot variance for an existing 480-square-foot detached accessory structure? We do have the two letters that the applicant has presented to us. The first is dated November 27th. To whom it may concern, we have no objection to the structure in the above referenced appeal and are in favor of the variance request. I can be reached any time in the below number, if further discussion is needed. Signed, Richard Oletto. 3247 Route 52, so he's one of your neighbors. And then the other is from John B. Smith and Nancy L. Smith, 3238 Route 52. To whom it may concern, we have no objection to the proposed structure on the Van Dyke property referenced above and we are fine with allowing the variance to go through with our approval. If there are any questions, we can be reached. Sincerely. So we'll put these on the record, okay? Thank you for talking to your neighbors and getting those letters.
Okay.
So seeing no other public comment, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. This is appeal number 3857 for Mark Van Dyke. It's 130-square-foot variance for an existing 480-square-foot detached accessory structure pursuant to section 194-107d of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied for the above stated variance and whereas the board moves to adopt their standard decision and order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community as it is an existing structure, used for storing wood for an outdoor furnace with limited views from Route 52. The desire cannot be achieved by some other means. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance.
Second.
Second, thank you. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
All right. Does he have a, does he need a building permit for this at this point or you're...
He's already made application.
He's made application, so, okay.
I'm going to just re- amend it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're done with public hearings. Last is, we have one review. So item number five is appeal 3858, Johns. Monica Johns representing Ellie Fisher?
Fishler.
Fishler, sorry, thank you. 43 McEwen Terrace, Hopewell Junction is requesting an additional four-foot sideline variance for an existing 20-foot, 24-foot by 24-foot detached garage and a six-foot sideline variance for an existing eight-foot by 10-foot shed pursuant to sections 194-107c and b3. Ms. Fishler was granted a 10-foot sideline variance for the garage in 1976, however, the garage was built four feet closer to the property line, therefore requiring additional four-foot sideline variance. Let me guess, they thought it, this property line was a line of trees.
Well, what happened was the neighbor had the survey. They granted my parents permission to build within that. They were going by their fence.
Okay, same.
Retaining...
And they had the survey, and I guess the survey varied from a survey that was recently done because I don't know how they did surveys back in the 70s as opposed to now, but apparently there was enough of a, because they had a survey.
Wow.
And it showed that, you know, they were good, they were close, but they were within that 10-foot or whatever range. It was close to it. And I had a survey done because I'm selling the property because my mother had a stroke, so now I'm trying to sell the property.
Okay.
They recommended having a survey done. I had a new survey done and now the survey shows it's different.
Okay, so you had all intentions, you were following the code as you believed it was, well, your parents as you believed appropriate.
Yeah.
They got a building permit. My understanding is the building permit has never been closed out.
No.
And so that's one of the issues that, that you're here for.
Yes.
And as we have said before, we've had many instances where people have come in thinking of the line of trees or the fence or whatever it was, was their property line and, you know, without a survey, but in your case, you actually had a survey, so.
They had a survey and they went by and the neighbor said the fence is his property line, you know, that's his line, and he was fine with it. And he gave my parents letters with, what do you call it? Notaries?
Right.
Signs saying, yes, we allow them to do this and that. And my father actually had gone through the first two inspections and then kind of left it to my mother to take care of it. He thought she took care of it and she thought he took care of it and...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Apparently nobody took care of it.
Now you take care of it.
I get to take care of it. Yes, now, now it's in my lap.
Okay. There is one outstanding issue, Rick, that you needed a permit for enclosing the back deck?
No. What?
The back deck was supposed to be a deck and apparently it's now an enclosed room?
It's enclosed, she's got screen windows up on it.
Well, that's enclosed.
Okay. I don't know, nobody said anything to me about this either.
Okay.
This is all new to me.
Site inspection, I found that.
And we think the ba, is the basement a living space? Is the basement finished?
What is meant by finished? She has a fireplace down there.
No permit for that either.
Oh.
The fireplace was there when they bought the house.
Okay.
That isn't something they put in.
Okay.
When did they buy the house?
In '74, '75?
They got a variance in '76.
Okay.
So they've, they've obviously been living there for a while.
Forty years.
Yeah, okay. All right, so at, to, the best of your knowledge, this screened-in porch in the back, was it always a screened-in porch or at some point was it a deck that they just added screens to? Does it have a, it's obviously got some kind of a roof to it, has a roof, so it is enclosed space and not a deck?
They bought the house, I was in college, I didn't look there, so.
Okay.
I'd never paid attention. I honestly couldn't even tell you if it was just a deck or a closed-in deck when they purchased it, I'm not sure. I'd have to ask my father how it was when he bought it.
All right, so how do we resolve this issue? Does she get a permit for it? I mean, it's, she's got to come in and have it inspected, make sure...
There's no electrical or anything, is there, on the walls?
Yeah, we don't know. Is there, is there a fan or anything?
There's, there's an electric plug on the wall outside...
On the house wall.
On the house wall.
From the house to the thing.
That may have been there anyways.
That might have been there, I don't know.
By the back door.
Yep. You know, by the patio door, there's...
Yeah, I think there are enough issues, so I would suggest that we have a...
Well, she's got time to clear them up because we're not going to do a public hearing. If we're agreed on a public hearing, it's not until January.
Yeah.
So we do have time to clean it up. I just need to bring to your attention that some things were identified. So again, finished, how do we define finished space? How does the building department define finished space? Living space?
Yeah, it's a heat exch...
Well, it sounds like it's got a fireplace. Is there another alter?
Fireplace was there.
Right, but is there another source of heat or that is, okay, are there windows? Are, is there access egress?
I'm talking about the garage was converted to living space.
The garage was converted?
No, the garage is a garage. It's not a living space?
You did a detached garage because the garage flooded.
No, no.
That's what the notes in the minutes said for the variance.
From...
From 1976?
And that garage is now has windows and appears to be living space. That the garage doors were taken off the house because they built another garage.
It says, it refers to Fishco Creek floods and that...
Right. The reason they wanted the garage separate was because it flooded and they put a rear entrance into it.
I honestly, I don't know if there was a garage in the house or not. I couldn't tell you if they did that or not. I don't know.
Okay, so again, she's got to resolve this issue as well, so she's got to come in and get a building permit for that.
They don't need variances as far as we know.
Right, and none of these things need variances, but they have to, in essence, this board shouldn't act on anything until you've cleaned up any violations on the property.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons the building department goes out and does inspections, okay?
Okay.
So, because, you know, at this point, you're looking to sell this house, right?
Well, I had a buyer, but right now it's all up in the air.
Okay, it's, well, and that's why, let's get it, because you don't want to get further along and then they can't get a mortgage because of issues related to violations.
Okay.
All right, so let's, that's what the idea is, we look at everything and clean up everything while we're at it. And we recognize, you're not the owner, you didn't do any of this.
Didn't even know about it.
It's existing conditions, your neighbors obviously haven't complained about it.
No.
So let's just clean it up. I'm just trying to make sure you have enough information to be able to figure out how do we resolve this so when you come back in January, we can all agree that the violate, there are no violations.
Okay.
So you've got, in essence, she's got to go meet with somebody in the building department and apply for the back deck.
Her notes.
Okay, and for the, the converted garage.
Okay.
Now, it says there's a carport off the side of the garage. Do you measure from...
That was taken down, right, to Coakley?
Well, it hasn't been taken down yet, I'm just...
It was up when I was there.
Oh.
That has to come down, but we're not...
But it is going to be coming down?
That's not, three poles and a plastic roof.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, there's not much to it.
I, yeah, there's nothing to it. I haven't gotten, I'm still trying to take care of the, everything else, the electrical in the garage needed to be redone because it wasn't up to code. The electrical for the pool needed to be done because that wasn't up to code. So right now I'm still, yeah, I know, I got, put a lot.
Okay, understood. That's all right, and that's why I'm saying, we're just going to clear everything up and make sure you know what you need to do so that we're good to go, okay? We're good, we're... Any comments or questions from board members?
And so we can't really go into public hearing until...
Well, we can schedule a public hearing because it's not, she can, she has time to be able to go apply for a building permit and even close out the building permits, but as long as she's applied for the building permits, there's no violations.
Okay, so motion rededized.
Now, was there a permit for the garage that was closed? Basement garage, was there a building permit for that?
No.
Because I honestly don't even remember my father doing that and I...
But if the record is reflecting that the reason he wanted the detached garage was because that other, the garage was flooding because of the garage doors and the garage doors aren't there anymore, then...
Okay.
It's pretty clear that at some point between 1976 and now...
They must, they must have been there, yeah.
Yeah, and again, you, as you said, Tara Starley, you were in college.
I don't know.
You weren't even living in the house, so.
They probably put some fill around it so the creek can't get to the building anymore.